Session and I'd like to.
Yeah, not on.
Good morning, morning. The legislature's back in session. I'd like to thank my colleagues for being here this morning and I understand that we've reached a consensus. So Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I'm gonna go ahead and withdraw the amendment that I proffered yesterday. It's an amendment on Section 5.
Okay, on that motion then to withdraw, no objections. So ordered Senator Guthard's then on your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'd like to say that Senator Ada and Senator Calvo are cosponsoring this amendment with me. And basically, the amendment will help us to overcome the little quandary we had yesterday afternoon when we're trying to figure out the best way to get the Guam Regional Transit Authority Board off and running. And so this amendment, Madam Chair, which basically replaces Section 5 in the current bill, 37, will resolve these issues. It starts out with Section A, Section 5A, "The Guam Regional Transit Authority is hereby designated state agency for purposes of receiving and dispersing funds from newest Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, or from any other federal agency in support of the mission of the authority." B, and this is new language, "Immediately upon confirmation of a quorum of the GRTA Board, the Board shall be responsible for the approval of all contracts and procurement in support of the mission of the Authority, except as otherwise provided by Public Law 2667-25F or other provision of law. The Department of Administration and the Department of Public Works shall assist the Board in that transition period." C, "Immediately upon confirmation of a quorum of the GRTA Board, the Department of Administration shall initiate," meaning shall start, "the transfer of all personnel and possessions, of all books, records, papers, maps, plans, documents, offices, equipment, supplies, money, funds, appropriations, licenses, permits, agreements, contracts, claims, judgments, land, and other property, real or personal, connected with the administration of or held for the benefit or use of the former GMTA to the Guam Regional Transit Authority. No later than October 1st, 2009, complete transfer to GRTA shall have been completed." So that's the end of the transition period, October 1st, 2009. And in the interim, as noted in Part B of Section 5, as proposed, "The Department of Administration and the Department of Public Works shall assist the Board in that transition period." Thank you, Madam Chair.
On the Guthard's amendment, are there any speakers? Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Madam Chair, I rise in support of this amendment. However, I would, if the author would yield, I just need a clarification on a couple of things. One is the, on paragraph C about the transfer of personnel, I don't think it was ever, are we contemplating a physical transfer of personnel or really just the operational control and management of the personnel who are currently with the Division of Transportation, the books and all that? So it's really more of the operation on management and control as opposed to a physical transfer.
Senator Guthard's, do you yield?
Yeah, I would think that is the case, Madam Chair, because at the Department of Administration, they have employees that do more than one assignment, I believe, for mass transit. So it would be those employees that actually are strictly with the mass transit function that should be transferred.
But, but we're not talking about a physical transfer.
Until they are set up.
Yeah, it's gonna take a while for them to actually find a facility.
Of course.
So we would need, I would need to, Madam Chair, make a, given that agreement then, need to make an amendment to the amendment.
We would take a minute recess.
Oh, this is a real quick one.
But I think there should be a minute recess.
Okay.
The budget.
Oh, we have to put that in.
Tom, Tom. Tom, this is your original language, this part. This is all your original language. So my suggestion is, transit personnel, transfer of mass transit personnel and their positions.
Say right now they're called the Transportation Division.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay.
And their FTE positions and [inaudible].
We will make that, here, here.
Saudis and funds for Saudis and budgets for Saudis.
Oh, yeah.
For Saudis. Okay, we're making progress, too. Getting better, getting better. You know, I got calls last night from the NAMCO again. They're very happy, but they want us to, they want help now, because public health, they worry about public health. They don't, they have buses that are down for the NAMCO. Nobody calls now. Can't pick them up because they can't.
Well, you're getting there.
So could we have a little bit of [inaudible]? Just ask how much money does he need to fix the bus? Yeah, ask Patrick to call him.
Breaking off the. Next time, I want to see a lot cheaper, all the money up for the guy, including the phone numbers and the time that they call them when he ends the conversation. Because I'm gonna audit it, I'm gonna call them up.
And what about this, they called you? They called me home last night.
Oh, come on.
I just had another one.
You hardly don't answer your phones.
That's not true, right? Look, Mr. Tudela just called. Mr. Tudela, right here.
What time?
Tudela, right now, 10:07.
How about last night?
He's asking for help with the public health buses. Last night, Mary Cruz, Mr. Aldan, Junior Francisco. Come on.
Those are all your contractors.
Those are all your H2 workers. You're too cute. These are nasty girls. The NAMCO's just calling and thanking me for all the. No, they're calling all of us, I said, not me.
No.
They're calling.
Daku, no.
Daku, you know what daku means? Liar.
No.
Not telling the truth.
Absolutely.
You don't even know how to find you. You put a security screen door.
Who, girl?
You.
I like your door.
Is it open now?
I don't think so. I'm only in here. I'll live in the little back office.
But you need a shower.
I'll be like the diet con artist at Mrs. Dogma. No, I'll go into the shower. It's off. Do you have hot water?
Yes.
Do you really have hot water?
Yes.
Do you have a shower? Do you have hot water? Yes, how did she do that? You should have hot water, hot water. So where's the hot water?
I think it's the tank.
All right, I'm gonna put a hot water. What do they call those things that heat up real fast? You can put it in.
Yeah, the tank is watering. But first you need a shower.
That's true. Did you hear on the radio?
Yeah, I wonder why you wore guns.
I heard on the radio coming down, the governor has been doing well.
Ray said it's a rumor. Running out, picture corner. The new rumor is that Ray's already been friends. Any of that already.
Do you know Carl and I were.
I knew it to her, but I saw it happen. GG, I just saw how events were moving.
No, no, no.
GG, government is wild.
I was hoping for a good.
I was hoping for a good.
It's gonna attack?
Next time, my boy, we're gonna get a top figure. He wants your.
I'll steal a new house.
He hates Ray.
Remember, you point one finger, there's a, there's a, there's a one finger.
I was expecting more.
By the way?
But I think that's a package. We have to pack it better.
Yes, I will.
Are you calling your father?
Yeah.
What's the [inaudible]?
Yeah.
Are you calling your father?
Yeah.
What's the [inaudible]?
Yeah.
It's there.
Oh.
It's on.
Oh.
I think that's a package.
Yes.
We have to pack it better.
Yes.
The energy is.
Yes, I will.
Madam Speaker.
Yes.
Are you calling your father?
Yeah.
What's the [inaudible]?
Yeah.
It's there.
Oh.
It's on.
Yes.
It's on.
Yes, I will.
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 It's on.
Yes, I will.[912.77]
The legislature is back in session. Senator Ada, on the Guthard's Amendment.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to proffer an amendment to the amendment. And that amendment is that in paragraph B, it clarifies that the transfer, that the board shall be responsible for the operations and management and control of the Transportation Division of the Department of Administration. And so, we've got to clarify then where the operational and management control will rest. And then in paragraph C, is just putting in the qualifier that in addition to having initiated the transfer of personnel, that transfer of personnel shall include the FTE positions and the budgeted funds for salary and benefits. And shall also then transfer the, begin transferring the possession of books, records, and other documents.
I think what we need to do is to divide the amendments first. So on B, you're amending then Senator Guthard's amendment by adding the operations of management control.
Operations of management control, correct.
Okay, on that amendment, are there any speakers? Senator Panglinen, you're recognized. On B?
I'm speaking for the Senate.
Yes, to Senator Guthard's amendment. Yes. Okay, so on the Ada amendment on B, subsection B, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Senator Ada, you want to finish off on subsection C?
I would like to amend subsection C to include the words there on the third line, the transfer of personnel, including their FTE positions and budgeted funds for salaries and benefits, and segues into and shall transfer possession of all books.
On the amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Are you done then, Senator Ada now? Okay, Senator Panglinen, I understand that you want to make an amendment?
Yes, yes, Madam Speaker. And I just wanted to add a phrase at the end of, I didn't.
You're not as short as us.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. You know, there's a gray area here then between the time that the, 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 the time that the bill passes, the time that the appointments are made, and the time that the confirmation of the quorum is made, and who does what. Well, we do know that DOA is going to assist, and that the Department of Public Works is going to assist, but I just want to be very clear that, to add a phrase at the end of the, of the sentence, the end of the sentence, line B, the last sentence reads, currently reads, "The Department of Administration, Department of Public Works, shall assist the board in the transition period." And then, instead of a period, put a comma after the word "period," and says, "With no authority to obligate GRTA to contracts, commitments during the transition prior to the confirmation of the board." So, while they're assisting them, you know, to operate, that part of that assistance shouldn't be the ability to bind the GRTA to any contracts or commitments prior to the confirmation of that board. So, so anything long-term that obligates GRTA shall not be done by DPW or DOA until that board is confirmed.
Can you again, please read that, "with no authority to obligate GRTA..."
GRTA to contracts or commitments prior to the confirmation of the quorum of the GRTA board.
On the motion, are there any speakers? Senator Ogden, you're recognized, on the Panglinen amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On the amendment to the amendment, I guess I have just a little bit of a concern here, or a question, in regards to the transitionary period between today, should this legislation be passed, and then, let's say presumably, the chief executive, as well as the mayor's council goes through the entire process of selecting individuals, making the appropriate recommendations, and then the chief executive forwards a nomination here to the legislative body. Let's say, with a very liberal timeframe, or if he's able to complete it within two months, so two months, sixty days down the road, and then we go through our public hearing process, these individuals are not confirmed conceivably for five or six months. So, in essence, by the amendment, and I just need a clarification and a better understanding of it, by virtue of the amendment being proffered, then the five or six months before a quorum is actually realized and confirmed, then there's going to be no consummation of contracts. Now, that's my understanding of what the impact would be of the proposed amendment. Now, that being the case, and DOA, and now that they're working supposedly in concert with EPW, they're in the process of finalizing their RFP, going out and submitting, putting out that RFP within about thirty days or sixty days, and then closing that subsequent to that. And I'm trying to see if there's a connect here, in terms of, okay, within the next five or six months, and conceivably it could be longer, Madam Speaker. A lot of it depends on the confirmation of the four individuals who are appointed to the board. But during that lag time, in essence, there's going, there will not be any contractual arrangements that can be consummated on behalf of the GRTA. So, I just need that clarification. If that's the intent of the sponsor, then at least I know exactly what the implications of the proposed amendment is. So, Madam Speaker, the good Speaker Panglinen-
Senator Panglinen, do you yield to a question by the Senator?
That's, that's correct. That would be the, that would be the case. If there was this contract that needed to be approved for the transportation services, as he says, it does require then that, if you read the top part, where it says, "Except as otherwise provided by public law 26, 67, 25F," that provision already requires that these transportation contracts be approved by the legislature. That's existing law. So, we're not changing that. So, if that contract is consummated prior to the, to the board's confirmation of a quorum, then that contract could be sent down here, and as required by law, could be approved according to current statute. So, it would not allow the, you know, it would not delay that approval, if needed, to happen before the board is confirmed.
Thank you very much, Speaker Panglinen. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think that, I just wanted to get that clarification, so that there's that general understanding, that within the lag time, or the projected time from, of anywhere from five to six or seven or eight months, that any contractual arrangement that will be consummated on behalf of GRTA would have to come before this body. Now, another issue that I think would be applicable here, and I certainly hope that the representatives of the executive branch are very much aware of this, that when we are looking at the resources that conceivably could be made available through the economic stimulus package, there are restricted timelines, in terms of making sure that we have projects ready to go, awaiting funding, and then, once the funding is approved, has to be expended. There are some timelines associated with the economic stimulus package. I'll give you a good example. It's my understanding that within forty-five days, the states slash the territories have to submit a request for participation in the economic stimulus package as it relates to whatever funding component they, in other words, they have to submit their request slash application to the federal government, so that in fact, upon the closure of that forty-five days on the date of signature, then the federal government will know and understand what projects are readily available within the respective communities. Now, that's one timeline, that has to be met by the executive branch. So, within that thirty days, or forty-five days, that, that those fundings are identified, associated, linked directly to a contractual arrangement, in this case, because some of those funds can be applied directly towards the mass transit, transportation system, that would be applicable here. So, I just hope, Madam Speaker, that the amendment that is proffered, I understand would, the process still requires that any final approval by, of any contractual arrangement would come back to this body. But, in terms of making sure that we understand here, that because of the economic stimulus packages to get resources into the economies, the respective economies, that we recognize that if any contract comes here before this body for consideration, and that it be put through the process, through the respective chairs, recognizing that there are some significant timelines that definitely have to be met. So, I just want, wanted to also bring that to the attention of the body, because obviously we want to maximize the use and the participation of the government of Guam to benefit the people of Guam in the economic stimulus package as much as we possibly can. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ogden. On the Panglinen amendment, are there any other speakers? Okay, so, oh, those then, who, so, is it related to the amendment? So, are there any objections to the Panglinen amendment? They're being non, so ordered. Senator Panglinen, can you please make sure the clerk has a copy then of the amendment? Okay, thank you very much. On the Guthard's amendment then, that's been amended, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. We're now on the main motion. Senator Calvo, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this bill, but again, I have some issues, in particular in page thirteen on section six, and this is funding source. And let me first recite this particular section. "The funding sources for the establishment of the Guam Regional Transit Authority shall include the Guam Highway Fund and shall for the purpose of providing funding from the Guam Regional Transit Authority facilities pursuant on operations. Additional funding sources shall be federal funds received for purposes of mass transit, and the third funding source would be funds generated by the fare box advertising and other business activities showed in this section. Funds obtained from these sources shall be used exclusively for purposes defined in this statute." Now, Madam Speaker, I don't have problem with the second and third funding elements, which again, I've, I've made mention of, but the first one, which is the Guam Highway Fund, I do have some issues and some concerns, just because, understanding the complexity of the Guam Highway Fund, and over the years, how the Guam Highway Fund has been, has had different uses, and there has been authority set forth, either through legislative appropriation or by mandates, where there is a split off of certain revenues from that highway fund to be used for purposes. One of them, of course, is to go on mass transit. I worked with the Legislative Legal Council, and she gave me some of the definitions, or not the definitions, but the enabling legislation for the territorial highway fund, as well as the mass transit automotive surcharge. The territorial highway fund, or slash the Guam Highway Fund, as mentioned in section fifty-four, one oh two of the Guam Code. Now, the purpose of the highway fund is for the maintenance and construction of the existing highways, including roads, cities, and village streets, and for implementing all highway safety-related plans, programs, and projects. Again, this is a separate account, held and apart from other government of Guam accounts. On section B of the highway, the highway fund enabling legislation, there is made mention of eleven GCA finance, eleven GCA, chapter twenty-six, article four, sixteen GCA, seventy-one, sixty. Now, this is the area in the law that's, that sets up the mass transit automotive surcharge. This particular section, again, is about, is of the total fourteen cents spent, per gallon, that is taxed to users of, or purchasers of fuel, this, there's four cents a gallon that is specifically utilized for this mass transit automotive surcharge, of the total I'm looking at the, the enabling legislation of the highway fund, I see where in the highway fund, there is, there is the mingling of revenues for differing purposes. One of them, of course, is for paying the highway bond for operations of government of the DPW Highway Division, and other, again, as I mentioned, eleven GCA, is for purposes such as the payment for the Guam mass transit. If you read further along in the definitions of the highway fund, monies deposited in the highway fund shall be expended after appropriation made through the legislature and upon vouchers properly certified by the Department of Public Works Director. Then it sets up the accounting procedures, that's D, C, on section D of fifty-one, four, one oh two. Monies deposited in the territorial highway fund shall be used to implement Title XXIII of the United States Code. Section E, and this is interesting, "No part or portion of the monies in the territorial highway fund, or from whatever source derived, shall be used for the maintenance or operation of a public transit system." And then it goes along to F, and, and other, in fact, to section F. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have maybe copies made of highway fund enabling legislation, and also the enabling legislation for mass transit automotive surcharge. Now, the concern I have is really is specific on section six, to the last two lines of section six, which is sixteen and seventeen, which is, "Funds obtained from these sources shall be used exclusively for purposes defined in this statute." And then again, in my reading of the language here, I can see that, I don't see any conflicts, again, with federal funds that are specific for that purpose of mass transit, and also sources that would be generated by the fare box, or advertising, or other business activities allowed in this section. But, on the first provision there, the Guam Highway Fund, I, I see potentially a conflict between this section here, and again, section fifty-four, one oh two of the highway fund, and I'm trying to see how we can reconcile it. I don't know whether we could just strike lines sixteen and seventeen, and that would be appropriate, because then it does not designate an exclusive use for all those purposes mentioned, or maybe there is some language that would, would, would not deviate from the original purposes of the enabling legislation of the highway fund, or the mass transit automotive surcharge, because I would assume that what we want in this funding source is to indent, to ensure that it's not the Guam Highway Fund, but more, it's a Guam mass transit automotive sur-
Can you, can you, I would want to do that.
And maybe, and again, there has been a suggestion on the floor, maybe to, maybe clarify it being twenty-six, five oh three, which is a mass transit automotive surcharge. I'd like to proffer amendment, either again, to make the change from the highway fund to, to the mass transit automotive surcharge, or to eliminate sixteen or seventeen, but if you would allow me at least a couple of minutes of recess to see which would probably be the best motion to make.
Okay, we will take a couple of minutes for recess.
Yeah, if, if I were to do that, just moving towards mass transit automotive surcharge, is there any issue there? Okay, so, we'll do that, okay?
Okay. So, I'll just, I'm gonna delete the highway fund, and make it specific to the mass transit automotive surcharge. Okay, so, Madam Speaker, whenever you're ready. I'm ready. I don't, I don't think we needed to write it down, right? Oh, okay, I should write it down?
I mean, how, it's not real?
It's very simple.
It's made it to me?
Okay, why don't, I'll write it down, but it's very simple for, I think, for the body. Yeah, just replace one, the highway fund, with the, with the mass transit automotive surcharge.
And, and it's your-
Okay.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Calvo, you still have the floor, and you, I understand you have an amendment?
Yeah, Madam Speaker. Again, after consulting with, with some of the members of the body, and on the recommended best ways to ensure that we protect the integrity of the Guam Highway Fund in its entirety, and, and the enabling statutes that created the highway fund, I would like to move to be more specific for, for, again, identifying the funding sources for the, for the Guam Regional Transit Authority, based on what the original funding sources were of the original Guam mass transit. So, Madam, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to make an amendment, and that is on page thirteen, in line eleven, and after "the," which states, "The Guam Highway Fund," to delete the Guam Highway Fund, and to replace it with the mass transit automotive-
Surcharge.
Surcharge.
So, you're-
I'm gonna have to call another minute recess, because I, there is another name to the fund, it's called the Public Transit Fund. It's called, excuse me, not the Guam mass transit automotive surcharge, simple here. Replace Guam Highway Fund with Public Transit Fund.
Okay, so, your, your motion is to amend on page thirteen, line eleven, after the word "the," we delete Guam Highway Fund, and replace it with Public Transit Fund.
That is correct, Madam Speaker.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. You still have the floor, Senator Calvo?
Madam Speaker, that is all, the only amendment I wish to make at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We're on the main motion, are there any other speakers? Oh, you're finalizing an amendment, Senator Ada? You were already working on an amendment as well? Okay, are there any other speakers before I call upon Senator Ogden on the main motion? Okay, we're gonna take a brief recess again. The legislature is back in session. Senator Ogden, on the main motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly stand in full support of bill number thirty-seven. You know, it's interesting to be part of the process of the evolution of our mass transit system. And when I say evolution, back in the twenty-fourth Guam Legislature, we had the Guam Mass Transit Authority as an autonomous, semi-autonomous entity of the government of Guam. And then in the twenty-six Guam Legislature, it was modified so that, the way it was structured and changed, was that the department, everything was moved over to the Department of Administration, which allowed for the, that particular agency to administer the contract, and to oversee the compliance of the terms of those contracts, but that was it. That was the nature of the mass transit authority system over the course of the past several years. And we've seen where it come, where we are today. And I think that that's perhaps one of the reasons why, if you take a look at the committee report, which was quite extensive, you take a look at many of the comments that were provided, it reflected a need for the community of Guam to get back to this idea of having an autonomous agency that would be able to oversee all the transportation, the public transportation requirements of the community, and in the same token, provide and improve upon the mass transportation needs of our people. And you know, I don't know if this process, Madam Speaker, is a reaction of what may happen in about five years or six years, but that's one of the rationales that's being presented, that because of the military buildup, we need to make sure that we try to address the mass transit authority. I don't think that's the case. I look at it differently. I look at that as an activity that will happen down the road, but in, in addition to that, there's that direct recognition, and if you, if I once again can allude to really the committee report that was provided, we had riderships, we had representatives from the community, we had business people, we had public officials from the government of Guam that said, "The system, at this point in time, has some serious challenges." So, based on that note, we're here now to reconfigure, or to reestablish, as the original title had, had, had it written out, to reestablish our transportation, public transportation system here in Guam. And I think that it certainly is time for us to be able to do that, and in the deliberations that have taken place just over the course of the past day, as it applies to this whole process, I think it's been good, very good discussion, recognizing what we are about ready to venture into, establishing another government of Guam agency. And you know, some people out there would question, "Why? Rather than trying to downsize the government, we're increasing the government." I look at it as a public need. When you look at the riderships, Madam Speaker, the information that was provided in, during the course of the public hearing in fiscal year oh five, we had approximately eighteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen ridership, riders, or users of our mass transit system. On an annualized basis, that translates to about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand and twenty-six, just for fiscal year oh five. You move on, and you transition through the years, fiscal year oh eight, that monthly amount increased from eighteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen to twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seven, every single month in fiscal year oh eight, that had used the mass transit system in its present form. You extrapolate that, and, and you look at the annualized figure, it went from fiscal year oh five-
You're right.
You move on, and you transition through the years, fiscal year oh eight, that monthly amount increased from eighteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen to twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seven, every single month in fiscal year oh eight, that had used the mass transit system in its present form. You extrapolate that, and, and you look at the annualized figure, it went from fiscal year oh five-
You're right.
You move on, and you transition through the years, fiscal year oh eight, that monthly amount increased from eighteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen to twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seven, every single month in fiscal year oh eight, that had used the mass transit system in its present form. You extrapolate that, and, and you look at the annualized figure, it went from fiscal year oh five-
You're right.
You move on, and you transition through the years, fiscal year oh eight, that monthly amount increased from eighteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen to twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seven, every single month in fiscal year oh eight, that had used the mass transit system in its present form. You extrapolate that, and, and you look at the annualized figure, it went from fiscal year oh five-
You're right.
You move on, and you transition through the years, fiscal year oh eight, that monthly amount increased from eighteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen to twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seven, every single month in fiscal year oh eight, that had used the mass transit system in its present form. You extrapolate that, and, and you look at the annualized figure, it went from fiscal year oh five-
You're right.
You move on, and you transition through the years, fiscal year oh eight, that monthly amount increased from eighteen thousand nine hundred and nineteen to twenty-two thousand seven hundred and seven, every single month in fiscal year oh eight, that had used the But if I can ask the mover of the legislation, the sponsor of the legislation, Madam Speaker, there's just a few items that I need perhaps clarification in, and I'll try to keep it to a minimum in terms of exactly what the impact would be, but I really need to understand, based on what we have in black and white, whether it is the intent of the sponsor to continue to move in that particular direction, considering that the Guam Regional Transit Authority that will be established herein would be an extension of the government of Guam or public services being provided. So, Madam Speaker, if I can just request the sponsor of the legislation to yield to a few questions?
Senator Palacios, do you yield?
Yes, Madam Speaker. I'm my best.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Senator Palacios. Just on page five, there's subsection F and subsection G. Subsection F states impose, prescribe, revise policies, and collect fees, and for the purposes of carrying out commercial advertisement. And then subsection G highlights adopts such rules and regulations pursuant to the administrative adjudication law. And it continues to read, as may be necessary for the exercise of its powers. One of the things that this legislative body has always tried to link, Madam Speaker, is ensuring that the administrative adjudication process, where any government entity that is proposing a significant change or deviation in policies, or in fares, or in fees, obviously you have to bring that information to the public. You have to have that necessary public hearing so that the community and our people understand. And I'm trying to see if there's that direct correlation here in terms of subsection F and subsection G. Some people can say, yes, it's right there, it's in black and white, but the way I read it, even if I try to interpret this, Madam Speaker, and Senator Palacios, and isolate subsection F and subsection G, and I isolate those two subsections, then it says basically that the authority can impose and prescribe and collect fees and not necessarily go through that process. So I think that it may have been the intent, Senator Palacios, that any fees on your part, that any fees that is generated or revised or adjusted, that it goes through the AAA process. So that's one of the questions I have, Madam Speaker, and Senator Palacios, whether in fact that was the intent, and whether in fact this is sufficient language, and there's that direct link between subsection F and subsection G, that there may not be any additional language necessary to ensure that any amendments and fees, or any changes in fees, go through the AAA process. So, Madam Speaker, if Senator Palacios can just provide perhaps that clarification if, in fact, you see subsection F and subsection G as being complementary to each other rather than can be interpreted separately?
I agree with the Senator from Jonya, of course, that there is a possibility of an interpretation separate from G, but I think that it has always been the policy and there's a standing law that anything that has to do with fees, implementation of new fees or modification, would have to go through the AAA process. But if that is not clear in F, then I suggest that we make it clear.
Okay, Madam Speaker, I think that as long as there's a general understanding here, that there's a direct correlation, correlation between subsection F and subsection G, I certainly don't want to propose an amendment that perhaps is already addressed here. And, Madam Speaker, and Senator Palacios, if you also go down the line to subsection J, the very same language is there, but there's not that direct correlation to the application, the use of the AAA process. So I'm taking it that this is a generalized statement, adopt rules and regulations, and any other activity where it says here that may be necessary for the exercise of powers and performance of the duties, that that would be inclusive of setting fares and making any significant deviation from policies and guidelines. So just based on that clarification, Madam Speaker, just as long as I feel, I do feel comfortable now that based on the sponsor of the legislation, that it certainly provides that mechanism. If I can move, Madam Speaker, to page seven, subsection six-two-oh-two...
Do you need Senator Palacios for anything else?
No, thank you, Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Senator Palacios.
Appreciate you yielding. Subsection, page seven, subsection six-two-oh-two, executive manager. Now, the executive managers shall serve at the pleasure of the board, very standard language, and the board shall establish a compensation. Now, is it the intent of the body to allow the board to establish a compensation on its own, or consistent with a review and in consultation with the Silver Service Commission? I just pose that as a thought, because I think that the way it's language here, certainly the board can come up with an arbitrary compensation, annualized salary for its executive director that perhaps may be a little bit inconsistent with other executive directors or managers in the government of Guam. Madam Speaker, moving on, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the body, see if there's any concerns that perhaps may be shared. Moving on to page eight, sometimes the open-ended statements kinda make it a little bit leery for me to understand, but subsection five, just before subsection six-two-oh-three, says to perform such other and additional duties as the board may require. In other legislative proposals or mandates, it's always been consistent with the activities of the authority. So I don't know if collectively viewing the requirements of the board certainly would be appropriate here in terms of allowing for that interpretation. But these are concerns, Madam Speaker, and I appreciate your indulgence, and concerns that I'm bringing to the attention of the body, just in case there are other issues that are brought up. But I'm reading this now on page nine, on subsection B, all other employees of the authority shall be classified employees. I take it that the board employee is an employee of the authority, unless someone can tell me otherwise, because the board's assistant, it's authorized in a different section to be employed as a non-classified employee. So there's a little bit of inconsistency there, and I wanted to see if that is, if our colleagues are reading that similar to how I'm reading it.
Section C and D was amended and they were...
Oh, I'm sorry.
And its board, both of them were deleted.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Speaker. With the exception of that, Madam Speaker, I think a lot of the other concerns have been addressed, and just one that I understand Senator Ada, the chairman, wanted to impress on is section eight, the effective date, because that issue was addressed, the transition and the timelines for the implementation of the...
What page?
Page thirteen, section eight, effective date. That issue was just addressed with the previous amendments that have been adopted by the body on this legislation, then I'd like to move that section eight be deleted.
On page thirteen...
Page thirteen, section eight, effective date.
Section eight.
Only because the...
The motion is to delete.
The previously, Madam Speaker, the previously adopted amendment already incorporated the transition timeframe, and that by October first, two thousand and nine, the official transfers will take place. So I don't think it's necessary for, I think this portrays some inconsistencies in terms of the effective date of the provision versus the transition amendment that was recently adopted. So I'd like to move for the deletion of section eight. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion to delete on page thirteen, section eight, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Are there any other speakers on the main motion? On the main motion, are there any speakers on the main motion? Okay, so then, on the motion then to place bill three, I'm sorry, I, okay, I'm, okay. So we, the, wait, Senator Manglin, do you want to speak again on the main motion? Okay, before I call Senator Palacios then to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, what I wanted to just clarify here that I was looking at was...
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
I'm just trying to find the right section.
Maybe if you give us the topic, we might be able to help you find it.
What I wanted to do, Madam Speaker, was the, I was trying to find the right section, on the employment of an attorney. I wanted to require that, oh, okay, employ an attorney or enter into a legal contract services, or enter into a contract services with the Attorney General to address legal issues. And I just wanted to, just rather than employ an attorney, just say, enter into a legal contract, may enter into a legal, shall enter into a legal contract with the Attorney General to address legal issues. And just kinda keep, again, once again is, you know, we have an Attorney General's office, allow them to be able to be utilized so that they can have greater resources within the office while addressing the issue here. We're gonna pay attorneys, let's pay them out of an Attorney General's office so that we can have a greater flexibility of pool of attorneys there to not only address the departments and agencies, the autonomous agencies and so forth, but allows the Attorney General additional resources through these kind of issues, so.
So on page five, line sixteen, it'll be to delete, employ an attorney, and at the word "shall," enter into contract with the Attorney General for legal services. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
On that motion, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Can you please make sure the clerk gets a copy of the amendment? Okay, on the main emotion, main motion, Senator Espoada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Actually, this is just a technical amendment that I think that needs to be made, because it was brought to the attention of this body in terms of page five, subsection F and subsection G. And I think one of the questions that was posed, or the concern that was posed, is whether subsection F falls within the purview of the AAA process. I think what we need to first of all recognize is that subsection F, in essence, deals with commercial advertising. So the board now has the power, we're conferring power upon the board to set, impose, to prescribe, revise the policies, and collect the fees with relative to commercial advertising. Now the question becomes, should that fall subject to the AAA process? If the, to me, if the board wants to raise the rates, because the rates might be too low, I think if you go through the AAA process, of course, anybody who wishes to advertise would definitely say, no, don't raise those rates. I think they have to be given that flexibility to make that determination. So I'm not really sure that AAA process falls within this realm in terms of dictating or having to go through that whole process just to change commercial advertising rates on mass transit property, on buses, on bus shelters, and things like that. However, I just want to raise that issue, because again, just to clarify some of the discussion that was going on earlier, the technical amendment I want to make is, because we can recognize, I think, that this subsection deals specifically with the commercial advertising on the mass transit properties, if we could just delete the word "and," you know, after the word "fees," collect fees, just to make it a grammatically correct, statutorily constructed sentence.
Page five, line eight.
On page five, line eight, after the word "fees," impose, prescribe, revise policies, and collect fees for the purposes of carrying commercial advertising, advertisement on real and personal property owned by the authority, et cetera. And bottom line, because if you read it with the "and," that word "and" in there, this whole clause does not make sense, or at least it's an open-ended, and it's not a sentence, to tell you the truth. So I move that we delete the word "and" after the word "fees" on line eight.
On the motion, without objection, so ordered.
All right, thank you. And again, I just wanted to make sure that we point out that section F, as it relates to the, we may have not made any amendments to dictate whether the setting of commercial advertisement rates are subject to AAA process, and I'll leave it at that, but again, I believe that it should not. Okay. Okay, and that's all the comment I want to make. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, if I mess me, I stand in full support, and I congratulate and thank the authors of the bill, as well the chairman of the committee for putting this out. It's long overdue, so it has my full support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Espoada. Any other speakers before I ask the primary sponsor to close? Okay, Senator Palacios, it's yours to close.
Thank you for that, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, we have heard briefly the statistics provided by the gentleman from Jonya, that I believe that the public transportation service or mass transit service is here to stay, and as we move forward in the next five years, it will be more and more pronounced of the need to have such a service. And of course, I'd like to thank my colleagues that have contributed so much tremendously, as I sat here and listened intently to the points raised. It only contribute to what they're strengthening Bill Thirty-Seven, I appreciate that. Madam Speaker, we need, of course, Bill Thirty-Seven to pass and become law, and that is that it will begin, of course, to build a solid foundation for a reliable and dependable service, which we need. I would like to use a public transportation service, but it's not reliable at this point. I mean, it's, so once it's reliable, then of course we can count on it, and then we can really, and so that is really one of the elements in Bill Thirty-Seven. And of course, I'd like to ask my colleagues for consideration and support of Bill Thirty-Seven to pass. And at this point, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Speaker, to, if I may add, Senator Tindamunia Barnes, as the first, I don't know if you call it first prime sponsor for the, on the bill...
Second.
Second sponsor for the bill, on the bill, because of her contribution, in fact, parts of Bill Thirty-Eight, her own mass transit bill, parts of it have been incorporated into Bill Thirty-Seven, and has made it better. And for that, of course, I would like her name reflected there. And also move that Senator Tom Ada be the second co-sponsor...
The third.
Oh, the third co-sponsor, because she has made, I mean, she has made a lot of contribution, especially in the markup meetings after the public hearing. And again, this bill is culminated into almost a perfect bill, of course, we need probably, hopefully, not much wrinkle to iron as we progress. And I'm open to any other co-sponsorship if... And the speaker, I mean, I would like to add the name of the speaker as the fourth co-sponsor of the bill, and again, for patience and understanding and coordination in the eventual, I guess, conclusion of this hearing on Bill Thirty-Seven. And for that, Madam Speaker, thank you.
So on the motion then to...
reliable at this point. I mean, it's, so once it's reliable, then, of course, we can count on it, and then we can really, uh, and so that is really one of the elements in, in bill thirty-seven. Uh, and of course, I'd like to ask my colleagues for consideration and support of, of, of bill thirty-seven to pass. And at this point, I'd like to make a motion, Madam Speaker, to, if I may add, Senator Tina Munya Barnes as the, uh, first, I don't know if you call it first prime sponsor for the, on the bill.
Second.
Second sponsor for the bill, on the bill. Because of her contribution, in fact, uh, parts of bill thirty-eight, her own mass transit bill, parts of it have been incorporated into bill thirty-seven and has made it better. And for that, of course, uh, I would like her name reflected there. And also move that Senator Tom Ada be the second co-sponsor.
The third.
Oh, the third co-sponsor, because she has made, I mean, he has made a lot of, of contribution, especially in the markup meetings after the public hearing. And, uh, again, uh, this bill has culminated in, into almost a, a perfect bill. Of course, we need probably, hopefully, uh, not much wrinkle to iron as we, as we progress. And I'm open to any other co-sponsors here. And the speaker, I mean, I would like to add the name of the, the speaker as the fourth co-sponsor of the bill, and again, for patience and understanding and coordination in, in, in the eventual, uh, I guess, conclusion of this, uh, hearing on, on bill thirty-seven. And for that, Madam Speaker, I, thank you.
So on the motion then to place Senator Tina Munya Barnes as the second, Senator Tom Ada as the third.
And Madam Speaker as the fourth co-sponsor?
And Madam Speaker as the fourth. Fifth, Senator Guthard, six, rector. On that motion, no objections? So ordered.
No objections, thank you, Madam Speaker.
I'm usually number fifteen. Okay, so on, on the motion then to place, uh, bill thirty-seven as substituted by the committee and further substituted on the floor on the, on the third reading file, no objections? So ordered. Very good. Yes, we are moving. The, we are now on bill number thirty-four, and the author of bill thirty-four is Senator Panglinen. You're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is. Madam Speaker, are you?
I think you need to bring it up.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm gonna, if I hold this bill up, you can see my face because it's transparent. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to, uh, move that bill thirty-four, COR, be moved to be placed in the third reading file for voting today, and I'd like to speak very briefly on the bill.
Okay, please continue.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, uh, bill thirty-four is a subject of discussion that occupied the time of this body and, um, early on in its formation as it debated the rules that it would operate under. And, um, it is similar, of course, and identical, uh, to a resolution that was presented earlier that would have amended the standing rules, uh, to require, uh, and to, actually to restrict the placement of unrelated subject matters on the annual budget bill or the supplemental bill unless that subject matter has had, uh, been noticed for a public hearing and, or discussed at a duly noticed, uh, public hearing, uh, or unless, of course, the bill is waived due to the existence of an emergency condition involving danger to public health and public safety. And really, all it is, is, is what everybody wants. I mean, you, you listen to President Obama, he wants transparency. You listen to the Republican response to, to their bill, they want transparency. And I think that's what this body wants, and it's what the people want. But much more importantly, it's what the people deserve. The people deserve an opportunity to petition their government. And part of that opportunity of petitioning your government to act, you know, in a manner that is going to be in your interest, is that you're able to, to voice your opinion on issues that are going to be discussed and acted on by your elected representatives. And one of the ways that, that has been stifled in the past, of course, is through this practice of, um, placing items unrelated to a bill that has been, um, discussed by legislative bodies all over the place, not just this body, but legislative bodies in general, have in, in most instances made it a practice of allowing, for expediency's sake, just putting things on that have not been discussed under the guise of, we need to act quickly, and, and et cetera, et cetera. And there are, um, provisions provided in law where if it really does threaten public health and public safety, you can waive those rules. And this bill in no way, in, um, impacts the ability of a body to do that. All this bill does is that, to the greatest extent possible, as a matter of public policy, as a matter of legislative policy, that everything that we act on will have been discussed at a public hearing where the people that, the, the matter will affect their lives will have had an opportunity to voice their opinion. And I know we sometimes kind of assume maybe, uh, that people have that ability now with all the technology and email and texting and everything else, but the matter is that the people have to know about it. In order for them to comment to us, they have to know about it, they have to be noticed, and they have to be given that opportunity. And so this bill just requires that that process happens in all matters discussed in this body to the greatest extent possible, and I think that that's what this bill does. It achieves what every member of this body, uh, I believe, believes the people of Guam deserve. I don't think anybody else, anybody in this body doesn't believe that the people of Guam should be kept out of the loop and in the dark on any matter, uh, that this body will act on. And this bill will just take that belief and translate it into public policy and, and legal requirement. And I think that, uh, that is, is really all that needs to be said on this bill. We've discussed it, debated it, uh, and so forth. And, uh, this is a, a process through the legal structure that puts that belief and that desire, uh, for this body to be open and transparent into the, the legal requirement of, of, of our government, uh, that will bind us and, and, uh, and guide our actions. So thank you very much, and I thank my colleagues, uh, for their support. So this must be Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Ben. Uh, on the motion, Senator Cavill, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, again, I rise in support of bill number thirty-four. Uh, as being the previous finance and taxation chairperson, uh, for as long as I had been chairman, again, it was my common assumption dealing with budgets, and just like the, uh, sun rises in the east and sets in the fall, or in the west, and as sure as there's death and taxes, uh, there was a surety that when it came down to the budget bill, once we hit the miscellaneous provision side, uh, things got very interesting. And as the mover of the bill, the budget bill, as a chair, trying to get the consensus of the body of, so that we could have a budget package ratified by this body and moved toward the governor for action, sometimes, in order to move that, if the body had agreed to certain provisions in the miscellaneous side through an amendment process that I didn't agree with, I had to live with it and move along. Uh, and I do recognize it has been, it's been a double-edged sword, because though there were some measures that I, sometimes I did not like to see move forward in the amendment process through the miscellaneous provision, uh, there are also amendments that I did look favorably towards, uh, and, uh, they were passed without having the benefit of a bill being introduced or a public hearing. But expediency was there, and it was in the bill, and, uh, it moved forward, and the bill was enacted into law. But then when you look at it, and then you look at the spirit of, of, of this legislative body, and that it does represent the people, and there is a process, a process where policies are either introduced, uh, through the creativity or the philosophy of an individual senator, or, uh, an individual group or, or some sort of organization comes to this legislature, to a particular senator, and saying, you know, Senator, we'd like to move forward in this particular, uh, um, policy decision, and we'd like to introduce a bill. But with that process, it means an introduction of a bill and having a public hearing, and then, of course, after that public hearing, uh, moving forward to the, to, through a completion of the public hearing process, moving that bill to legislative session for action by the body and deliberation. Uh, that being said, I, I kind of wish I had thought of this when I was the chairman of the committee. But, um, now that I'm a member of the minority, but also seeing, again, that, um, that the sun does rise in the east and does set in the fall, I mean, in the, in the west, and that there are, there are provisions for, again, taxation, and there is death, gotta recall, I can't change the sun from moving in a certain direction, and I can't change mortality, but hey, we can change taxes, and we can change the law in specific to, to the budget process. And with that in line, I, I am in full agreement with, uh, with the previous speaker and the author of this measure, that there's nothing wrong with transparency. And with that, with transparency and allowing a vetting process where the general public has an opportunity to speak on a measure, uh, hey, it may be a little bit slower, a little bit more tedious, but that's what democracy's all about. So with that, Madam Speaker, I do rise in support of bill number thirty-four, and I ask for the support of members of the body. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Cavill. Senator Palacios on the motion, main motion.
Madam Speaker, I rise, of course, in support of bill thirty-four. It's the transparent bill. And while there are advantages, of course, to being able to introduce riders to a budget bill, I admit that sometimes my observation led me to suspect that perhaps, uh, sometimes it's stretched, uh, outside of the boundaries of acceptable conduct in my, in my observation. And so I think now with this, the passage of this bill, it, I think a little bit more challenged then on the part of members of this body to try and get bills to the floor, uh, which is not altogether bad anyway. Now, I, I'd just like to ask, just to make sure, based on our previous discussion, uh, I guess as a group, that it is my understanding that this amendment will not affect bills that have been already heard in a duly public hearing, and that for the opportunity now, now to take it on while, while we're hearing a budget bill, that, that is acceptable, uh, that is not precluded by this, by this bill. And so I, I think, then, then that's still, there's the opportunity. So I guess the challenge is conduct a public hearing on some bills, and the first opportunity that come, if you can, you know, you can make it as a rider on a, on a budget bill, it's been heard anyway already, then, I'm, I'm, I support this, uh, bill, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Espo Don?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I also rise in support of this bill. You know, in the last legislature, in the twenty-ninth form legislature, that was my first term. And I'll tell you, we went through, I don't know how many budget proceedings during the last term, just to revise and revise and further revise, and we spent weeks on end in this session hall. And with all the work and all the brain power and energy that we put into it, I really, and again, maybe it was just that freshman ignorance, right? I really was confident that we were making headway in terms of the budget portion. Again, some, some items I didn't agree with, but for the most part, it was part of the process, I recognize, part of the deliberative process, which everybody has contributions. And I was satisfied with that, and for the most part, I was always ready to act and vote in favor of those budget bills because it represented the will of this body, for the most part. However, it's when we came to the very end of that process, and people started adding all these unrelated items to the budget bill, that sometimes just had no place, and probably on its own face, would not have either passed legislative muster, or would not have been signed by the governor, if it was a standalone bill, were put into that budget bill. And as a consequence, I think we've been able throughout the years, not just last term, but throughout the years, put in some legislation that may not have been good public policy, but because it was part of the budget bill that needed to get passed so that we could pay our bills and, and go forward as a government, it was, it was contained and became law. And that's why I am in support of this legislation, because let's stick to the issues before us, as opposed to all of a sudden, at the very end of the budget session, be blindsided with all these ideas and concepts that get introduced into that legislation and really have no place, first of all, in that legislation, but also, like I said, may not even pass the legislative scrutiny, or, or, as a standalone bill, or even the governor's signature. But again, we have been forced to accept it, and, and in fact, that was one, one of the bases on which I had, I did not vote for several budget bills, although I liked the budget portion, I did not, uh, agree with a lot of the other items that were placed in. So I definitely agree with this bill. There is one thing, though, and this is not related to the amendment that's being made, but it's, it's, it's relative to this section in particular. And again, this is just, a lot of times doing this, when, when amendments are made to statutes, it's, for me especially, uh, it's the first time I see this piece of the law. And this is the first time I've really looked at this piece of the law. Uh, and as you read it from the very start, starting on line three, it basically reads, "No bill introduced, comma, considered or passed by the legislature, comma, or any of its members, comma, shall contain more than one subject matter, comma, and shall not contain unrelated subjects or pertain to multiple projects," et cetera. Again, in terms of strict statutory construction, what we would need to do, and, and being consistent with the intent, I believe, of this passage, if you take the first three words of this paragraph, says, "No bill introduced," and attach it on to the "shall not contain" unrelated, basically you have a double negative. A double negative then constitutes a positive. So I would move that we strike the word "not" to have this consistent with what the intent, I believe, of this section of the law is.
What line?
That would be on line four, after the word "shall." That way, the, it would be more consistent. "No bill introduced shall contain unrelated subjects or pertain to multiple projects except for one." Otherwise, if we do not remove that, then we're actually saying the reverse. We're actually acknowledging that, yes, you can introduce a bill with multiple, multiple projects. And again, this is just pure, uh, linguistic semantics, but again, the outcome is definitely one hundred and eighty degrees from what the intent, I believe, of this section of the law is. So my motion right now is not so much on the amendment that the good senator has made to this portion of law, but is more in terms of the body of the, of, of this section of the law. And that's on line four, and strike, and my motion is to strike the word "not," because we... I'm sorry. It's okay, because it's not in, it's not in law yet, you know?
On, on the amendment to delete the word "not" on line four, are there any speakers? Senator Palacios, you'd like to speak on it? On the amendment?
Uh, thank you, Madam Speaker. I follow the presentation of, uh, the gentleman from Tumuning. Uh, I, I do not read it that way, and again, it, it remains, of course, to be resolved. But when you begin with "no bill introduced," they just say, "No bill introduced shall contain more than one subject." So the "no," "no bill shall contain more than one subject," comma. And then I would think that the "and shall not contain unrelated subject matter" is actually, in my opinion, is separate, and, and it, it should apply. Otherwise, if the "and shall not contain," if, if we were to strike out the "not," then they would read like this, "No bill, no bill introduced, considered or passed by the Guam Legislature or any of its members shall contain more than one board, and shall contain." So we're saying "shall not contain more than one subject matter, but it shall contain unrelated," if, if you were to strike out the, the second, the "not." That, that's how I, that's, that's how I think it would read.
I, I, we're gonna take a minute recess on this.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
We had established both of you now, is if you break out the stuff between the comments, and you read it from the beginning, "No bill introduced," and you go to the "and" part, right? No bill introduced shall contain unrelated subjects. That's the upper portion of that, if you break out the other section. So what he's saying is that, "No bill introduced shall contain unrelated subjects or pertain to multiple projects." That's the substantial portion, if you break off the first part. So the first part is "contain more than one subject matter."
That's the upper part.
Fine, that's one of the upper ones, but the other one is, the unrelated matter, right? This is one, more than one subject matter, that's one. And two, which is the "and," "shall contain unrelated subjects." So if you read it from the beginning, you break out all the other stuff, "No bill introduced shall contain unrelated subjects or pertain to multiple projects." I'm not an English major, but I mean, clearly. You can tell, you can tell someone else that he didn't read it, and I'm fine with it. That's, that's the way it is, right? So, if anybody was trying to interpret the law, shouldn't be an English major. You're right, that's true. It's not bothering you. And only if I bring it up, just because, you know, if you're going to, you know, again, I'm looking at you. If you were to, if you were to, you know, read, "No bill shall contain more than one subject matter, and shall contain..."
That's how I think it is.
That's how it's going to read.
As opposed to a "bill" that, you should say, "No bill."
It shall not.
The one there is "no bill," or the phrase "no bill." "No bill shall contain more than what?"
Not, add the word "not." Shall not contain, and shall not.
Didn't say "no," didn't say "if you say 'bill' shall not contain."
Shall not contain.
Or the word there is "no."
Bill shall contain more than one subject matter.
That's right.
That's what the "not" is for, for me, see?
Bill shall not contain more than one subject matter.
The one there is "no," we only give the word "no." "No bill." It's supposed to look at...
I think "our bill."
Yeah.
You begin with "our bill," and you say, "Our bill shall contain more than..."
But see, but then...
Shall not contain.
But when you say "no bill," as opposed to "our bill," see? So "no" and "not."
But "no" and "a" is referred to the same thing.
Yeah, "a" is referred to the same thing.
"No bill" is the same thing. Just say "bill."
No bill shall contain more than one subject matter and shall not... Whatever it is. "Rory," it's a retro, Rory.
That's true.
Rory. It's a retrogressive adjective, the partial of the parliamentary...
What, you say, "any bill"?
Yeah, that's it, if you do hear "any bill," it's this.
No bill shall contain more than one subject matter and shall not...
I don't say, I agree, I agree with you. "Bill shall not contain..." That's where the "not" is for. How about that, Ben?
"How about 'never' and 'nor' shall contain?"
Yeah.
"Nor shall contain..."
"Nor shall contain..." "Nor shall contain..."
Rory, you can say "and shall not." It's easier to say "and shall not." Nor, they don't understand, that's British English. Shall not. Shall not.
That's right.
No, no, Judy, but it's an English "nor," so say the American "not."
He's trying to use it in our vernacular.
And shall not.
Madam Speaker, I think, very simply, I think, Senator Carver, at the very beginning of the sentence, instead of having "no bill," you can put "any bill." And then on this, on line four, after the first "shall," you can put a "not" there. That way, everything's consistent. So "any bill..."
"And shall not contain more than one subject matter."
"Considered as..."
"And shall not contain..."
"Shall not contain more than one subject matter, and shall not contain unrelated subjects." No, that way, it's consistent. It's not something from a certification, I mean, because, I like that. Going down the road, I know, I know it's a very technical thing, but then if it ever comes to a point where there is this intention, we have to have some kind of people that have been, you know, out of ways, and then it's on the, I mean, excuse me, it's on the list. And so I think it's, it's mandatory, and so the voters would then be, put the word, strike the word "no" and then you can put "any" on line three. And on line four, after the first "shall," you can insert "not," that way, the line...
Shall not. That's what I said, "shall not." For 10 minutes.
Now it's, it's in agreement.
That sounds much better.
That's the American English way to say it.
They call that parallel.
I know, I could say that. Haven't I been sitting here saying that?
Any, you said "no."
I know, man. The irony of...
Shall not.
Nobody acted that.
Huh?
They are, and it all, nobody would act that.
I know, that's the problem, no one answers here. No one acted this way.
Okay, so we have to judge, decide.
How do we know there's a...
Okay, any?
They were conducting session without...
Any introduced, shall not contain nor unrelated subject matter, and shall not contain...
Right. Right. So that's... Everybody, that's parallel. When you read that, you're... We're back in session, Senator Spalding. Then we're going back to your amendments. Do you want to...
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for that, for that brief recess, just to clarify.
Withdraw your other...
And so I do move to withdraw my previous motion to amend it, and instead now move to, on line three, the very first word "no," replace the word "no" with "any." And then on the fourth line, after the first word "shall," insert the word "not." That way, the statutory construction of this particular law is consistent throughout and is not subject to misinterpretation.
On the, on the motion, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the main motion...
Oh, did I mention that I do support this bill as well?
Yes, you did. Thank you very much. Senator Guthers on the main motion.
You know, Madam Speaker, there's a time for everything, and everything has its time. And it's important to have order out of disorder. So in that vein, I support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthers. Are there any speakers, Senator Tenorio?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in support of the bill, and I want to thank the, not the immediate, but the preceding speaker retiring, for his amendment, I think it makes it clearer. But I wanted to kind of make one little comment on the bottom portion, where the additive language is, on line nine, because the previous existing law says that one, except for one annual budget and one supplement to the annual budget, and this says here now, on the additive language, "unrelated subject," excuse me, "unrelated subjects on an annual budget bill or a supplement to the annual budget bill shall have the subject matter of a bill," et cetera. But the previous section says, "except for one annual budget and one supplement to the annual budget." I wanted to recommend a change to line nine, where you strike "a," and you will put "only one supplement to the annual budget," because the previous section allows for one exception, except for one annual budget and one supplement to the budget. And in this section, it says, "a supplement to the annual budget." So just to be consistent with the section above, and the language for one exception, "only one supplement to the annual budget" will be allowed. So the words "only one" will replace "a" right after the word "or" on line nine.
Can you please read what it would say there, "unrelated subjects..."
So it would then say, starting from line eight, "unrelated subjects on an annual budget bill or only one supplement to the annual budget," et cetera.
On that amendment, are there any speakers? Are there any objections to the amendment? No objections, so ordered. Please make sure that the clerk gets the amendment as well.
Madam Speaker, I want to commend the author. I supported this when it was up before the body previously, and I think this has merit. I also have the same kind of consternation that previous speakers have alluded to with regards to being a rookie senator, if you will, back in 2003, and seeing the inordinate number of matters that came before the body during the budget process, which did not have the benefit of public hearing, and also were added to not just the amount of discussion, but highly contested debate, and ultimately convoluted the bill to the point that it ultimately gave anybody an out, if they needed a reason not to vote for something, there were many options given to them. This will perhaps clean up and make greater accountability for our elected officials who are charged with the responsibility of passing a budget in a fashion which is consistent with our desire to have a transparent process. So I commend the author, and I dare, I ask, to be second co-sponsor of this bill. Well, maybe third. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Zuzma say.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Senator Frank Blas Jr.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Madam Chair, the stars must be aligned properly for the good senator from Baragana to get almost unanimous support from the Republican side.
Well, that happens many times.
But you know, I too rise in support of this bill, and I want to commend the author of this legislation, and I also have to agree with the good senator from Baragana Heights too, as well, that, you know, it's time. The, well, where's she at now?
Mingila.
Mingila, still? All right. Okay, she's from Mingila, but the car stay in Baragana Heights. Hasn't been accepted by the people from Baragana. But anyways, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, you know, I guess one of the main reasons to why I support this is it allows us also to concentrate wholeheartedly on the budget bill and the supplement to the budget bill that is presented before us. I have to agree with the previous speakers in the culture shock that, you know, that you receive as a freshman senator, when you're going through the budget bill, you know, and sometimes the budget bill takes maybe a couple days, and then you go to the other provisions of the bill, and then it adds on a couple more weeks. This allows us to be able to concentrate on the matter that is at hand, the matter that is before us. And that if there are any needs to be able to address otherwise, I agree, we'll get the input from the public before we come in and we start to decide on whether or not we're going to go left or right with regards to any other appropriation, any other appropriation measures. So, Madam Chair, again, I congratulate the good senator from Baragana. I too supported this when this matter came up earlier, and I'm going to continue to support this, this measure too, as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Frank Blas Jr. Are there any other speakers? Senator Rector, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to thank all my other senators. I rise in support of this bill. It's kind of funny, I like it how everybody is standing up and supporting the freshman senators and not wanting us to suffer through what they suffered through. Usually it doesn't work that way, right? We have to go through the same hazing process as they went through, so I completely appreciate it. And I did kind of look, look towards going through the budget process with dread, thinking about going through all this. And after listening to everyone's good advice, and the good advice of the person that introduced, the good former speaker, Ben, that introduced this bill, I rise in support of it, and I'm glad that it's going through. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Mr. Rector. Are there any other speakers? Okay, and we'd like to give the primary sponsor to close.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I want to thank my colleagues for their consideration at this time, and, you know, as everybody said, maybe it's in its own place and its own time. I think there is no wrong time for transparency. There is no wrong way to implement transparency. There is no wrong way to be transparent, except maybe when it's indecent. But this is nothing different from what happened, you know, a couple months ago, except now we have "any bill" rather than "no bill." But, and I want to thank everybody for coming around, because nobody was, some people weren't there in the beginning, but I do want, and I'm truly grateful, on behalf of the people of Guam, for everyone that have decided that at least this is the right time for them to support this. Maybe it wasn't the right time the last time, but at least today it's the right time, and I want to thank them for that. I want to also close by making an amendment to add you as the second co-sponsor. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. On the motion, then, to place Bill 34 as amended on the third reading file, no objections, Resolution Number 13, Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Resolution Number 13 on the voting file with some brief discussion.
Yes, please continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On that motion, I kind of waited a little bit, reserved my comments on the bill that we just moved in the voting file, and to express my support for the legislature doing everything it can to try to be transparent. And Resolution Number 13 takes, it builds upon what we just moved into the voting file, and what the former speaker from Baragana just did by introducing that measure. Resolution Number 13, Madam Speaker, would set up a situation for us, would actually prohibit the legislature from meeting from the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. Because even if you have introduced a bill, and even if the bill has gone through the public hearing process, and as much as we'd like to have the community informed with what we're attempting to do here in this legislature, sometimes we found ourselves in situations, particularly during the budget process, where in our attempt to try to get a budget bill passed in time, and trying to give the governors customary 10 days, we've often found ourselves meeting through the wee hours of the morning. I certainly don't like to meet during these times, but in many instances, I've been here for seven years now, like majority of our colleagues, and been here longer, we've just found ourselves meeting during this time. And when we try to pass bills, no matter how honorable or clear our intentions are, it just does not sit very well with the public, it does not sit very well with the media, that we're passing things under the supposed cover of darkness. And so even at this day and age where we have, where we're being televised live, even at this day and age when we try everything we can, in fact, in the last legislature, when we had to do something and vote on something, I believe at 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning, immediately I stood up and made a motion that our proceedings be rebroadcast at 8:00 a.m. But that still didn't sit well with some of our members here, saying that, well, the action was already done, you can rebroadcast it all you want. But we operate here, knowing full well, that everything we say, everything we do, will, if it's attractive enough, will come out on the 6:00 p.m. news, or will come out on the talk radio the following morning, or on the print media as well. So I ask our colleagues to support Resolution 13. And although this is a resolution amending our standing rules, we still have the ability to waive this if, in the event, we're called in here by the governor, and we have to address some kind of pressing community need, which would require our attention during this period, which I'm seeking to prohibit. So as a side note, some of our spouses, my spouse certainly excited about this resolution, and some senators have said that, that they're excited about it, because they know that from the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., there's no, no, no excuses. So with that, I hope I continue to get this support from the, from our colleagues, and I ask that all senators be co-sponsors. Madam Speaker, before I conclude my presentation on Resolution 13, I move that all senators be co-sponsors of this resolution.
Okay, on that motion, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the motion for Resolution 13, Senator Uggan, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I know that there's been a lot of comments already said by the sponsor of the resolution, but I wanted to stand up in support of this. Even though that perhaps I was a direct participant, a facilitator of sessions that have taken us until 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 o'clock in the morning, I do understand the nature of why this would be helpful in terms of ensuring... this would be helpful in terms of ensuring transparency. There was one comment that was made and my only question is whether, in fact, Mr. Gibson or Mr. Kaufman or Ms. Arroyo would appreciate an amendment like this. I take it that they would appreciate it because at least they can see the senators and work. But I know that many times in the past, actions of the body by virtue of the timelines has led to an increased discussion and conversation on some of the amendments that have been added to legislation prior. But, Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in support of this and I want to, in particular, extend a general appreciation to really to MCV and GTA who have taken it upon themselves to provide the people of Guam and the public direct coverage of legislative session. I think it should be noted that they provide the regular coverage during the duration of our entire session, even if we're on temporary recess or whatnot. And I know GTA just recently entered into that arena and that arrangement with the Guam Legislature. And for that, I want to recognize their contribution to the public in terms of ensuring that the people of Guam are aware of exactly what their senators, their legislators are doing within the Guam Legislature. Also, Madam Speaker, I need to also reemphasize what the sponsor of the resolution had alluded to. I consider this a pro-family slash marriage resolution. Because in my previous terms, there have been many occasions that, in fact, we've had to endure late hours or early morning hours into 3:00, 4:00 in the morning just to get either budgetary issues completed so that, in fact, we can get it to the chief executive or meeting that particular timeline. And I'm sure my wife also will be very appreciative of this. I think the challenge here is, is not necessarily a challenge, I guess, the requirement, unmentioned requirement here in looking at the resolution is that our good colleague from Baragana now has to appropriately plan so that, in fact, at least we have a minimum timeframe of four to five weeks to discuss the entire executive branch budget. I tried that at one time. We were supposed to start on August 1st and guess what? The session didn't commence until September 1st, the first week of September. So, it was kind of a challenge at that time and I'm a direct contributor to that. But I certainly stand in support of this resolution and at least my wife, understanding the speed of my vehicle, can be assured that I will be home no later than 10:40 p.m. and then not be required to report to legislative session prior to 6:45. So, at least this is going to help someone's marriage in the case. So, thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I certainly stand in support of the resolution.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Senator Carvill?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, to the author of Resolution number 13, I thank you, my wife thanks you, my sons thank you, and my daughters thank you. And my pet dog, Paca, thanks you. Madam Speaker, again, I raise in support of the resolution. I guess we would be now called the prime time legislature. But, Madam Speaker, again, looking back at history and going through these periods of, again, a long intense discussion and sometimes, again, starting at 9:00 or 10:00 in the morning and deliberating, and deliberating very critical issues, but then ending up at 11:00, 12:00, 1:00 at night. And I'm sure for many of our veterans here, when you are tired, sometimes your emotions run thin and the ability to have a very constructive and intelligent discourse and yet at the same time keeping emotions at bay, it becomes very difficult, again, with an extended session. In fact, a lot of, sometimes a lot of unfortunate events have occurred in this legislative body as a result of, again, being very tired and with being tired, not exercising the proper decorum or even making certain decisions and amendments when you are very fatigued. And sometimes decisions made when you're fatigued do not come out to the best interest of the quality of the product such as the bill or sometimes even to the best interest of the people. Madam Speaker, I know as we move along in this process, maybe we're going to have to also look at, again, containing the amount of time necessary to speak on a particular matter. In the past, we've laid a foundation for about 15 to 20 minutes and by the time we came to the end of the discussion by a senator, again, there was just not enough minutes, hours in a day to move forward in concluding the discussion. So, again, with this, I think this is a very favorable resolution. Again, as we move towards building a better legislative process, maybe we could look into other areas as well in terms of the amount of time necessary for any senator to speak on a matter. But anyway, thank you so much and I rise in support of Resolution number 13.
Thank you very much, Senator Carvill. Senator Panglinen, on the resolution?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of the resolution and thank everyone for their concern about the process and maybe the impact this would have on my health as chairman of the Appropriations Committee because that's really been about the only time that we meet beyond, you know, the late hours. Most of the time, we can actually defer action on the body till the next day. It's going to help. But I hear that, really, the real motivation with this was that they were thinking that some of the senators' wives had requested that Mr. Manning, you know, implement the RFID on their cars also so that they can track them and where they're at when they say they're in session. And so, but, and I can say that because we don't have wives and husbands.
Where the, when the shoe fits, where?
The extra 40 minutes. But, but ser-
Okay, all joking aside now.
But seriously, Madam Speaker, I do want to say that, you know, the intent is certainly meets with the effect that it's going to have. I think that this is going to be a good bill. It's going to allow us, you know, the proper timeframes that would ensure that the people actually get the maximum opportunity to be informed about what we're doing. It is amazing, though, that the interest that people show on what their legislature's doing. I mean, I talk to many people, you know, when I'm on my way home after a 1:00, 2:00 session and I actually get a phone call on my cellphone because people are still watching. So, there is great interest. But, you know, we're keeping those people up late. I'm sure they would like to have been in bed by 10:00, but they have an interest and they want to watch, you know, and so forth. But, so they continue to monitor us, not to monitor us, but they have an interest in knowing what their government's doing. And I think that this will make sure that it's all within a reasonable timeframe for everyone. And so, I thank the good chair of the Committee on Rules for introducing this legislation. I fully support it and know that it will help in terms of allowing us and giving us the opportunity to do some better time management to ensure that we get things we need to get done in a reasonable time manner, time and manner for the benefit of the general public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. Senator Respecho, do you want to close? You want to send, oh, Espo Don? Okay, I'm so sorry. On the resolution number 13?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I thank you. I normally don't need to speak after other colleagues have already voiced the same sentiments that I share. But in this case, I really wanted to rise in support of this resolution because it's also consistent with the previous legislation we talked about that Senator Panglinen introduced in terms of no additions to the budget bill. Because, again, as a first-term senator, last term, this was another one of those instances where I said to myself, what are we doing? This doesn't make sense. Reasonable people don't do this. And we would go into late night hours, early morning hours, and again, just seeing how, again, the emotions get frayed, how tempers rise, how we no longer are thinking logically but are acting more emotionally because we're just tired. And then, again, for me, the reason why I wanted to speak on this, as brief as this is going to be, is to at least we can acknowledge that we are making some progress in changing the way we're doing things because that exactly is the challenge we all have going forward with all the major issues coming down the pipe that we need to address. But to be able to address those issues rationally and logically and what's in the best interest of the people, we also have to organize ourselves along the same fashion. And I believe this definitely contributes to that. And so, I definitely rise in full support. It seems to make a lot more sense in terms of how we do business. And again, if we are going to be the example in which people would, could look up to, this is definitely a good start, this and the previous bill introduced by Senator Panglinen. So, I thank Senator Respecho for adding us all on to this as co-sponsors because this is a good thing. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Espo Don. Senator, anybody else who would like to speak? One last chance. Senator Respecho. Okay, so on the motion then to place Resolution number 13 in the third reading file, no objections, so ordered. We are now on Resolution number 15. Senator Respecho, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we accept Resolution number 15 as substituted by the committee.
On the motion to accept, no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this resolution was introduced particularly to-
Motion to place?
Yeah, I move to place Resolution number 15 in the voting file with some discussion.
Please continue.
On that motion, thank you, Madam Speaker. Resolution number 15, which is relative to presenting an agenda of priority concerns for Guam on federal territorial issues for proposed action to President Barack Obama and to the Congress of the United States, was introduced to kind of capitalize on the fact that we have a new president in the White House and we have new members of both the House and Senate. And also to capitalize on the fact that we must present a united front to the people of, in Washington, D.C., particularly the president, members of both the House and Senate, to try to bring up some of the unresolved issues relating to Guam. We saw in the governor's State of Our Island address where he highlighted all of his accomplishments over the year, we saw that the good majority of those accomplishments, Madam Speaker, came as a direct result of federal programs and federal grants and aid to the island of Guam. And this resolution is no different from that. It highlights the concerns that this legislature believes should be a priority, including the recognition of the moral right to self-determination, the need for a just political status, resolution of the issues of unreturned ancestral lands by way of a return of lands either to the actual land involved or equivalent parcels, implementation of war reparations recommendations as provided for in the Guam Loyalty Recognition Act, necessary funding as identified by the Guam First Commission to include the capital infrastructure obligations that will be imposed on the people of Guam as a result of the ongoing military buildup, the inclusion of Guam in the supplemental security income program for the disabled, which applies to all 50 states and the CNMI but has yet to be applied to Guam, exemption from the Jones Act that has an adverse impact on our cost of living, removal of funding caps on Medicaid and public assistance programs, full reimbursement for the adverse impacts of the Compact of Free Association on our health, education, and public safety resources. And we know that the good Senator Frank Blas Jr. has companion resolution to address this concern and he's been trying to get this concern addressed too by the federal government. Provision of sufficient healthcare resources to address the needs of Guam veterans, cleanup of environmental health hazards, the investigation and treatment of serious health problems related to federal activity, including downwinders, full participation in the new administration's proposed economic stimulus legislation, which we just saw a resolution to that, greater participation in federal mass transit and other public transportation programs, establishment of a secure Guam-only visa waiver program, assistance with other economic development initiatives. And this resolution did have a public hearing. It was properly vetted. Individuals from our community testified and as a result, we saw the addition of additional concerns highlighted in this resolution. But I ask the body to consider the passage of this resolution. I'd like at this time to move that all senators be co-sponsors because it's particularly important that we always present a unified bipartisan approach in ever we're dealing with any other organization outside our own. And so, I make that motion at this time.
On the motion to include all members as co-sponsors without any objections, so ordered. On the list, I have Senator Titegri, Guthers, and then Panglinen. Senator Titegri, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm in support of this resolution, but I would like to include another section to this resolution. I have the amendment here. It's-
Is it a long one and is everyone ever copying?
No, very, very short. But, well, not it. I'd like to include a new item, Q, and it would be include reimbursement of the earned income tax credit, EITC, paid to Guam taxpayers by the government of Guam since the inception of this program. So, I would like to also include EITC, which is a federal unfunded mandate that costs us close to $15 to $30 million a year.
Okay, on that amendment, are there any, Senator Panglinen, on the Titegri amendment?
No, the, just to be clear, the legal name for the program is the Earned Income Credit. It's not Earned Income Tax Credit, so just under the IRS code, which is where it's contained.
Thank you. Stand corrected.
Okay, Senator Blas, on the amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not being able to see that, I just need to make, also to make sure. Madam Speaker, if, can I add an amendment to this amendment? Is-
And is it, well, because you see, we haven't even seen the first one. It says reimbursement of EIC.
Paid to Guam taxpayers by the government of Guam since the inception of the program. I want to add, after the word paid, paid or owed?
Paid or owed. Okay, on the amendment to the amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Okay, Senator Uggan, on the Titegri amendment? No? Okay. Senator Guthers, on the Titegri amendment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say that I think the resolution is great and I know that some of our senators will be on an official visit to Washington in March. And I think if you are able to bring this with you, the senators that are going headed by our speaker, that you will be able to disseminate this widely to the appropriate congressional offices and White House offices. And I think it's always easier to make a case with federal officials and congressional representatives when you have something in writing to share with them. So, I think this resolution will be very timely and helpful in that regard. I do have two amendments I want to make.
We are on the Titegri amendment.
Oh, on the Titegri amendment. Oh, I'm sorry. I support the Titegri amendment. I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Guthers. Okay, Senator Titegri, then, if there's no one else to speak on it. Senator Titegri, do you want to close on your amendment? Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly stand in support of the proposed amendment to the resolution. Just a couple, if I can recommend just some insertion of a couple of words, please, Madam Speaker. And it would read such as, first of all, after the second line, after of the program and payment of, delete all, future EIC payments. So, it would read reimbursement of the earned income credits, EIC, paid to Guam taxpayers by the government of Guam since the inception of the program.
Wait, it was paid and owed? Ode was put in?
And payment of future EIC payments. Does that make sense, Madam Speaker? Okay, on the second line, it would read government of Guam since, to include my amendment, government of Guam since the inception of the program and payment of- government of Guam since the inception of the program and payment of future EIC payments or future EIC obligations.
And payment of future EIC payments.
Obligations, I'm sorry.
Obligations.
And the reason for this, Madam Speaker, is because obviously, the initial, the way it was initially written is for the reimbursement to the government of Guam, and it says, and all future EIC payments. It's not reimbursement to the government of Guam, but to assume the obligation and to recognize the obligation that we certainly would like them to, the federal government, to consider the payment of future EIC payments, obligations.
On the Uggan amendment to the amendment-
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Senator, on the, we're still on the Titegwe amendment. She's going to close. Senator Titegwe, do you want to close?
I would just like to thank everyone, Madam Speaker, for their support in this, and one down. Thank you so much.
So on the Titegwe amendment, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Okay, Senator Guthers then on the main resolution.
Again, I think the resolution is very timely and critical to bring Guam's message forward in Washington. And as I said earlier, I understand there's two or three senators that will be participating in a very important conference in Washington, D.C. in March, as well as visiting congressional offices and federal offices to talk about the needs of the island. And I think bringing this resolution along would be very helpful in that vein. I do have one amendment I want to add to the list, so this would come after, I guess, after new amendment R. This would be section, the next section after R. And I think, Madam Chair, it's important that we also bring to the attention of the federal government the fact that we on Guam still want to pursue a political status referendum. And I'd like the resolution to contain a provision which reminds the federal government of the desires of the people of Guam for the right to be able to pursue a political status decision, and also to call upon the United States government to fund the cost of this referendum, which it has done in other jurisdictions such as ours. So maybe legal counsel can help draft that one little provision as an additional section or reiteration of needs. That would be one of them. The need for the United States government to recognize the quest of the people of Guam for political status change and to also help fund the education program with reference to such a referendum. Thank you.
We're going to take then a brief recess for your amendment. You can? Is there, does anyone have any real objections to the amendment that Senator Guthers wants to proffer that legal counsel will work on? No objections then? Somebody's thinking, I can, Senator? No objections, so ordered. I can even actually see your thoughts. Senator Panglinen then on the main motion?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just want to put on the record, of course, other than my vote, my support for the resolution. I think that, you know, if we had the Guam First Commission, this is the same work that we can lay the groundwork here on, get the consensus building on, on the issues that are articulated in this, and actually pursue it from a unified point. We still remain hopeful. I've supported the good senator, the author of this amendment in the Guam First Commission after, after some adjustments were made to the bill and it was sent back to us and so forth, and continued to support the concept of trying to provide a forum and a structure to address these issues from a unified position and presentation, much more importantly, to the federal government from a unified position through the Guam First Commission. And this is just a addendum to that process of building the consensus for the issues that are important to us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Panglinen. Senator Rector, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, I think this is a very important resolution, that we go to the federal government and our new president with a united front. But I would like to make a couple of comments and propose a couple of amendments to it. On page three, paragraph G, has in the, in it the exemption from the Jones Act that has an adverse impact on our cost of living, and Guam is the only insular area affected by, fully affected by this act. You know, I know that it's popular for people to believe that the Jones Act is, adds to our cost of living and makes things more expensive on Guam, and yet it does a lot of other things as well. One, it provides good union jobs to our people. Those are middle-class jobs to a lot of our citizens right here on Guam. Now, on an island that is desperately hurting for middle-class jobs, why on God's earth would we want to tell the federal government that we don't want these jobs here? That we don't want federal dollars coming into our families' pockets, into our tax coffers, to help fund public education, to help fund the public structure, to help fund the things that make our island habitable for all of our citizens? So I would move the amendment to delete paragraph G from this resolution.
On the motion to delete section G on page three, all in favor, please raise your right Motion failed. You still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Moving right along on paragraph J, it reads currently, "The provision of sufficient healthcare resources to address the needs of Guam's veterans." You know, President Obama is very intent on making sure that every American has healthcare, and he is working on a health, universal healthcare package of some sort even as we speak. I want to make sure that the people of Guam are included in this universal healthcare package. As you know, many of us, many of our own families struggle to pay our healthcare costs. Many of our public servants struggle to pay our healthcare costs, and our Monacos struggle to pay their healthcare costs. So I think it's very important that we include ourselves and our families in his, in his proposal for universal healthcare. Therefore, I move to amend paragraph J to include the words after Guam's veterans to say "and all of Guam's families."
On the motion on subsection J to include the words "and all," after veterans, "and all of Guam's families." Are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Senator, I mean, Rector, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I look forward to the rest of this resolution passing smoothly and in a great form, and I will do my best to help push it through our lobbying powers in D.C. so that it gets to President Obama and the people that it needs to. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Rector. Senator Blas, canceled, okay. Are there any other speakers? Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Just on, I certainly stand in full support of resolution number fifteen. And if I can just provoke some slight adjustments to some of the wording, some page two, Madam Speaker. On sub-item E, if I can just recommend that in line nineteen, that we delete the word "and" and put it right after facilities, healthcare, facilities, comma, and public safety facilities. I think there's that direct recognition that the ongoing or the impending military buildup is certainly going to impact utilities, educational facilities, healthcare, as well as our public safety requirements. So I would like to move for that amendment, Madam Speaker.
On the motion then to add on line nineteen, page two, the words "and" public safety facilities, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On page three on sub-item M, as in Mary, it reads, "Full participation in the new administration's proposed economic stimulus legislation, especially as it relates to public facilities, structures, and infrastructure projects." I think that the intent of the sponsor of this particular amendment certainly was very timely upon the introduction, but because the economic stimulus package has already been passed and signed into law, and now the onus falls on the, really, the responsibility falls on the lap of the government of Guam in recognizing the constraints, the requirements in terms of accessing those economic stimulus package proposals and the funds. I don't know if in fact this subsection, item E, is necessary in this resolution. So I'd like to move for its deletion, Madam Speaker, in recognition that the intent was very timely and certainly recognizable at that time when it was introduced initially, but that because it's now federal legislation, really, we own the process in terms of participating in that and accessing up to, in excess of a hundred million dollars. So I'd like to move for the deletion of sub-item E, M on page three.
And to read number-
Or, Madam Speaker, if I can reconsider the motion? There's been a suggestion by a number of our colleagues that we delete, rather than deleting the whole section, that on line fourteen, just delete the word "proposed."
Okay. On the motion then, just to delete the word "proposed" on line fourteen on page three, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. You still have the floor, Senator Uggan.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. On page four, you know, Madam Speaker, I think that if you look at the resolved clauses, it presents the concerns of the people of Guam, but it's not necessarily our request. And I was, I was discussing with the sponsor of the, of the resolution initially whether really language should be incorporated in here to request the consideration of the president, and in this case, also the members of Congress for their support on these, on these items that are being presented. Because what this resolution does, it highlights all of the concerns that the people of Guam or all of the issues that the people of Guam have been faced with over the course of the past many, many years, and it presents our agenda. Now, do we want to extend that particular presentation and say encourages or requests serious consideration or support for these items? I think that that's an aspect that perhaps the intent of the author was to primarily present this to Congress. And if that's the case, then, then I won't propose an amendment. But that was an issue that, that came to mind when I was reading the last two sections, Madam Speaker, is that we're presenting our agenda, but simultaneously, we're not also in the same breath requesting consideration and support. So I just wanted, wanted to bring that up as a, as an issue, and I certainly stand in full support of resolution number fifteen. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Uggan. Senator Blas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to be able to amend, propose an amendment for, on page three, line five, item I, where it basically reads now, "The full reimbursements for the adverse impacts of the Compact of Free Association on our health, education, and public safety resources," actually to now let it read, "Full reimbursements for the impact cost," strike out the words "adverse impacts," replace it with "impact costs," "of the Compact of Free Association on our government resources," striking out the words "health, education, and public safety." This is to be consistent, to keep consistent with, with the current statutes that exist within the U.S. public law, and also to ensure that we capture all the areas that the, this impact, how this, the impact of providing these services in behalf of the federal government, and we're not limiting it to just those areas of health, education, and public safety. There are other areas in as far as the human services too as well.
Can you read then the full sentence?
It will now read, "Full reimbursement for the impact costs of the Compact of Free Association on our government resources."
Okay. On, on the amendment, on the page three, lines five and six, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. Is that it, Senator Blas? Do you have any other?
No, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Any other speakers? I'll give it now to the author to close. Senator Rispio, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I thank our colleagues certainly for their input. In looking at the other items that we have received from the Committee on Rules, there's a resolution number fifty that's introduced by the Vice Speaker, Senator Spalding, Senator Guthers, Senator Munia Barnes, and myself. And it also, in my opinion, deals with an issue that we must bring to the attention of those in Washington, D.C., particularly the Homeland Security Advisor. And so I have a floor amendment that would incorporate this resolution fifty, and it would add one whereas clause, and it would read, "Whereas the people of Guam call upon the Department of Homeland Security to reassess its current position on the exclusion of Russia and the People's Republic of China from the list of approved countries for the Guam CNMI visa waiver program, and also request a hundred-day extension of the June 1, 2009 implementation date for the revised Guam CNMI visa waiver program." And then I also would like to add to the list of transmittals to the Honorable Janet Napolitano, Secretary, Department of Homeland Security. I ask that we include this into this resolution, not only because time is of the essence, but also because it's something that would affect our island of Guam. And so I make this floor amendment at this time.
On the motion then to add a new whereas clause and to add an additional person to transmit the resolutions, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
So on the motion then to place resolution number fifteen in the third reading file, are there any objections? No objections, so ordered. I think we're going to take a lunch break and we'll resume at two this afternoon.
Senator Rispio, Senator Blas, Senator Ada, Senator Palacios, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, and Speaker Ben Panglinen.